I think they're coming in. All right, live stream is going.
All right, I will call the April 27, 2020, 5 o'clock meeting and call it order. Tim? You can say your message.
Uh, let's see, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending provisions to the open meeting law, chapter 30A, section 19, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort is being made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by accessing the live stream of this meeting on the town's YouTube channel, youtube.com/freetownMA, or by visiting freetownma.gov/frecam. In the event the live stream is unsuccessful, I am recording this meeting, and the recording will be posted to the town's YouTube channel as soon as I am able to following the conclusion of this meeting.
Thank you.
Good to go.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to welcome our guests, Representatives Paul Schmidt and Carol Fiola. Hi, guys.
It's like she's still connecting the audio.
Okay.
Hello, Karen.
Hi, all.
Hello.
Nice to see you.
Hello.
Is Paul here too, Tim?
He, he, I thought he should be there any second if he's not.
Yep, he's not here just yet.
Okay.
Well, text that we're waiting on here.
Hi, George.
Hello.
Looks like we have a new entrance to the meeting, so let's see here. There he is.
George.
He's connecting. He should be in.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hey, Paul.
Were you waiting for me to get in? Are you, are we on now, Representative Fiola?
We are here. I see you. I think we all see you. Probably see me now, but do you look up top and see everyone?
Yes, I can. Well, let me just lead off by thanking the board for allowing us a minute or two in this meeting today. And the subject is the census. You have a lot of life and death issues going on right now. The census is not one of them, but it is an important issue, and it's a matter of money, as you know, for the town of Free Town. And we just wanted to, through you, remind everybody in town to complete that census form. It's very easy to do, just to log on to 2020 census and fill it out.
Thank you, Paul. Carol?
Yep, Lisa, thank you all. I would just echo, what we know is that if we don't do it, we lose money. It averages about 25, in Free Town, it would be about $2,500 a person per year for those 10 years that you would lose out on. We do know, and let me just say, my colleague Rep. Schmidt is on the committee for the census, and so his ear is to the ground, and he continues to remind us how important it is. And certainly for large urban communities, it has really significant impact, but on smaller towns, it has equally significant impact. So while Free Town is an excellent responder, there are many communities that are not good responders. Free Town is a good responder, but, and we've also extended the deadline. The deadline has now, it was previously August 14, but now the deadline is October 31. But it takes literally five minutes to either go online to Census 2020 to find that paper under your pile, since everybody's been cleaning and organizing their homes that came to them weeks ago, and they'll get others if they haven't responded. And there's a phone number too, but it's very simple but significant, right, Rep. Schmidt?
Yeah, really, really takes just a couple of minutes logging on and doing it over the internet. So, and as Rep. Fiola mentioned, actually, Free Town is doing very well right now, so congratulations. Don't let it up. Everybody log on, and thank you very much to the board.
And lastly, it's a tough time for all of us. Please know that both of our offices are available to you and your constituents for anything to do with unemployment, any concerns that they have. We've been fielding these calls all day for the last many weeks, and your businesses that may need some assistance, if we can help. And lastly, I'd like to give our condolences. I know there was another death today in Free Town, and give our condolences to the town and of course to the family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thanks so much for reminding us. I think it is a good opportunity to remind us that we don't think about all the funding that we could lose if we don't go forward into the census. So I'd like to offer, if the board agrees that, Tim, maybe we can put that on a one call to send out to everybody to not only remind them about, you know, that census, but also our town census as well. And I don't want anybody to get them confused. So people might think that they filled out the town census, and that also applies to the, you know, to the United States, but not only that, but we need to make sure that we do both of them at the same time. So if we could send out a one call, that would be really, really a great idea, I think. So if the board doesn't mind if you, if you consented.
I'm good.
Okay, George?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, anything we can do to help, because I think that those numbers, $2,500 per person for 10 years is a lot of money, and we can't, we can't let that go.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks to you all.
Thank you so much for all that you're doing for the town, and especially during this, this time.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You, bye-bye.
Bye. Take care, stay safe.
Have a good night. Thank you all.
Okay, we have another guest with us, Michael McHugh, to talk about scheduling the annual town meeting and the special town meeting. So Mike, you want to just go over a couple of things of what we need to keep in mind should we go down that path?
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. The best advice that I could give to you is just figure out the safest way to do it. What you have to remember, because we have open town meeting, is that there's, there's no limitation on who can come. Any voter is entitled to come. As you saw, we had the meeting in February that was primarily regarding the Lake District, and that drew several hundred people, and there's no reason to believe that that or the annual town meeting will not draw several hundred people again. So perhaps be looking at the largest venues that we have available to us, or some towns are now looking at outdoor venues. That's probably the best advice that I could, could give unless you guys have specific questions or concerns.
No, I, I don't have a specific question or concern. I just, I'm curious as to the timeline of when you would want a decision by the board.
I have to, in terms, I'm going to speak specifically to the continued special town meeting about the Lake District. There is the ability to delay that or to reschedule it to a different time, a different date, or a different location. I have to provide voters with sufficient notice that we're going to do that. The law has been relaxed a little bit. The law used to require that the meeting be held within 30 days of when I made that decision. It now is within 30 days of when the meeting was scheduled for, which is June 1. So I think because of the Memorial Day holiday, even though people aren't really going to be traveling, I think the fairest time to make that decision would be no less than two weeks ahead of time. So that would put us at approximately May 18. If we needed to move that Lake District meeting, I'd want to do that no later than May 18 to be fair to everyone. If, that's going to depend too on, are we trying to still have that at the same time as the annual town meeting? That was what the voters wanted to do in February, but none of what's happened in the last six weeks had happened then. I'd like to think that if we needed to split them onto different days for some reason, that, that people would be understanding of the reasons why. But if we were going to try to continue to do them the same day, then I would need you guys to set a date for the annual town meeting early enough that I would be able to do what I needed to do again by May 18.
Okay, does the board have any questions, Charlie?
Yes, Michael, so you're saying you want us to at least technically set a date by May 18?
That would be the most helpful. That, that again would be if we were aiming to still do the two meetings on the same day, which was, which was what folks voted they wanted to do in February. Just because of the Memorial Day holiday, I think the fairest time for me to say that the Lake District meeting needs to be altered is two weeks ahead, and that's, that's May 18. So that would be the timeline that I'd be working on right now.
Okay, and then my other question would be this. We set a date on May 18, though the process, we could still end up continuing them to a later date than what we set on May 18, correct?
That's correct. Once the date has been set, there's one of two ways that it can be changed after that. Either there's, in the law, it allows me to make an alteration if there's a public health or public safety emergency, or failing that, we could have a few people show up, and this is how it used to be done in the past, have a few people show up, open the meeting, declare either that there's no quorum, or that we're unable to accommodate the number of people who are present, and then vote to continue them to another date. So you're not, if you set a date by May 18, you're not locked into it.
Okay. All right, thanks.
George?
When Mike says set a date by May 18, are we saying that we have to find a date that we want to use by May 18, so that May 18 is the date of the meeting? A little confused on that.
May 18 would be the date that I would need you to decide when you want to have the meeting.
Okay, okay.
David, do you, sorry, George, do you?
I would agree to try to just have one meeting instead of two. That's half the exposures for everyone if we're still in this. But, so we haven't, another couple of weeks or more to decide on a date, basically is where we are.
Right. If, if you want to keep them lined up to the same date, and, and I'm asking for May 18 as the deadline, again, just, just to be fair, to give people enough notice that the other meeting's being changed.
Michael, refresh my memory. The Free Town Elementary School, where we usually have it, is what, 300?
Um, hold on one second, because Tim had sent me those numbers before, and I'll just, I'll pull them up. So Free Town Elementary, the auditorium holds 400 people, and the gym holds 535. You know, I, I think you would be looking, if there's still any kind of social distancing, I think you'd be looking at using at least both rooms, if not more than both rooms, to accommodate, you know, 300 to 400 people, which is what I would, would be inclined to think would show up. When you get to the regional campus, the capacities are considerably larger, and they allow for a lot more spreading out. So that would just be something to consider for an indoor meeting.
The other thing that you're going to need to consider is if we're having it in multi-rooms, that there's a way to communicate from room to room, so that if people in one room want to ask a question, they're able to address it through the moderator in the other room. So, so we're going to need to plan that in terms of, if we don't already have that type of equipment, then we're going to have to rent it.
Right.
Having done that, I had a town meeting that was close to 1,000 people at one point, and we had them in like four different locations, and we, we literally had to hire a sound company to help us do the setup.
Yeah, when, when we did the, when we did the meeting that was split between the auditorium and the cafeteria at Aponequit, people in the cafeteria were able to watch what was going on in the auditorium, but if they wanted to speak, we were having them come to the auditorium. If we were in more than two adjacent rooms, or if we were spread out considerably, like David's saying, that, that wouldn't be feasible at that point. We'd have to have sound equipment in each location.
I think with the social distancing, you're going to see that, you know, you, you may not be able to queue people up in the line in, in the auditorium or wherever the main meeting is. You're going to have to have six feet distance between them coming up to speak into the microphone. So, yeah, there's, there's going to be some technical things that we're going to have to address in the next few weeks to be able to make sure that we can actually pull it off.
Oh, that, and, and I mean, there's going to be time to consider too, because if you say you're trying to maintain social distancing even in the check-in line, well, if you have 300 people show up trying to check in, and you're keeping them six feet apart, you're going to have an incredibly long check-in line, and it's going to take much longer than we normally take to check people in just to get them into the meeting. That, that's something else that has to be considered also.
How about the outdoor, I'm sorry.
Go, go ahead.
Outdoor meeting, the outdoor meeting, would that be technically less challenging?
Um, I mean, I, I do know of one town that has done an outdoor meeting out in the middle or western part of the state. I don't think they had a several hundred person turnout. If we were going to do it outdoors, we could be very spread out that way too. You know, you're not going to be packing everybody into the bleachers at Aponequit because they'd be on top of each other. If you're spreading out, you could be in the bleachers, on the football field, on the baseball field. You know, that, that's something that has to be looked at too, is, is what will the venue be and what's available there? If you're on the regional campus, you have a lot more options because you have multiple buildings, you have multiple outdoor locations. If you're at Free Town Elementary, you, you're kind of limited to the gym, the auditorium, maybe the cafeteria and activities room if you're outside. Now you could be spread out, you know, different parts of the building or whatever. There, there's a lot of logistical questions that are going into this right now.
I mean, myself, I think I would recommend the high school auditorium with the cafeteria backup. Think that really worked pretty well the last time we did that.
It did. And, you know, again, going by that list of numbers that Tim had sent me before, at Aponequit, the auditorium holds 410 people, the cafeteria holds 300, and the gym holds 1,040. So even if you had to spread out over the three rooms, you're, let's see, 1,040 and 10,050, 1450. You, you have capacity for about 1,750 people that way. So if you're spread out, even with 300 or 400, you, you're spread out a lot.
The only challenge with using Aponequit is coordinating with Lakeville, which usually does not end up working out for us.
So, that's my, that's, so.
Yeah.
They have not made a decision yet. Um, I believe they were going to try to talk about it tonight, but they're only a two-member board right now, so, um, they weren't ready to make a decision. So if we make a decision now to hold our meeting on 6/22, and we let that, that should give us a lot of leeway. It also gives us an extra week if we had to push it off to 6/29. If we don't get numbers but from the state, then that would, we could send a letter immediately to the school department tomorrow requesting the use of that facility.
That would be good.
The only trouble I see with that is I've done that before, and basically they reach out to Lakeville and say, do you want this night instead?
Right, but right, like I said, right now, they, I don't, I don't know, the last time I talked to one of the members, they were still up in the air. They didn't want to make a decision too quick. Um, and, and my way of thinking, and I don't, you know, let's talk about this, is that we are not going to have numbers from the state until late, and then if, it will give us a lot more time to plan if we're going to have it at Aponequit, to iron out all the kinks. So, I mean, we can, we can wait until the 18th of May, but who's to say that's, that's only going to give us a little over a month's time to plan. Now we're going to have like a lot more time.
Can we get first dibs into, you know, so to speak. And the other thing too is worst-case, even worst-case scenario, if the, we are, we could always, worst case, if we, if it starts to spike again, and we have to go through this whole exercise again, we could at least open it and continue to a date certain from there.
George?
I was going to say, could we set two dates, the primary date and an alternate? So if the primary date doesn't pan out because of Lakeville, we can go to the alternate date, maybe a week or two apart.
Michael?
No, I think what George has suggested is, is wise. If I could just throw one thought into that, Lisa, you had mentioned the 22nd and the 29th. If I could interest you in the Saturdays, the 20th or the 27th, and the reason I say that is, if we do have a cumbersome check-in process, if we do have lines that are stretching on for eons, and, and, you know, one at a time checking in or something of that nature, if we're aiming for 7 o'clock, and people start coming at 5:30 or 6, we may not get started until 8:30 or 9. If we went to a Saturday afternoon like the Lake District had been, then even if we're delayed, we still might be starting at 3 or 4 and not 8 or 9.
So are you suggesting the 21st and, no, the 20th and the 27th?
That, that would be my suggestion for, for the two dates to consider. And again, just for that reason of, of the check-in, and not knowing how long that might take, and not wanting it to stretch way late.
Okay, Charlie?
Sounds like, usually I wouldn't be that much in favor of a Saturday, but it sounds like a good idea to me, possibly go with the Saturdays.
I agree with you, Charlie.
And the, and the two dates, Lakeville can't have both of them, you know. We, we have, we own half that school also. And I, I think some people forget that, but we do own, it might be in Lakeville, but we do own half of it.
All right, so.
I do have a suggestion for the board. Maybe not, maybe don't actually, maybe vote to have me reach out to the schools to try to coordinate it, as opposed to voting to have the meeting, because like, I don't know how, I love the, trying to think how to word this. If we vote to have the meeting and we have to change the vote, now maybe this is a question from Mike, do we need to basically jump through hoops to actually reschedule the meeting? So if we vote a date tonight, is that setting the date? Is basically what I'm asking.
My belief is that the, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I play one on TV. My belief is that the date is set when the warrant is issued. If the warrant issues with a date, that's the date you're, you're locked into. But I, I think Tim's caution is, is well-taken to, to maybe set those as the possible dates, and then let him check with the school and circle back on the next available time.
Well, why don't we vote on the dates but not the place until we find out?
Well, that's, that's true too.
Right? Because we, we don't want to change the, change the dates, because we kind of want those two Saturdays. So if we set the date, then we can, we can set the venue at another time.
Yeah. I mean, we have a capacity number for the middle school. The gym is 1,100. We don't have a capacity for their auditorium or their cafeteria, but presumably if Aponequit were not available either of those dates for some reason, the middle school would be an appropriate backup for the same reason, the, the large capacity and, and the multiple rooms.
Okay. So do I have a motion to set the date either on June 20th or June, and consider June 27th as well?
Make the motion.
Whatever.
Second.
George beat me to it. I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Michael, you have some direction, I guess, and Tim too. We'll reach out to the schools tomorrow and see what, what we can do and where we can have it. And then we'll decide after which venue is going to be best suited for us.
Right, and, and just so that you guys know the procedure, when it gets to be the middle of May, before I can make a decision to reschedule the existing town meeting, it does require that I consult with the selectmen, the Board of Health, which is still the selectmen, and Derek, if it's for public health reasons, or the selectmen and public safety officials, if it's for public safety reasons. So one way or another, I'll be looking to talk to you again in a couple of weeks just to satisfy that requirement.
All right, sounds good. Stay safe. Thank you so much.
You guys need a roll call vote on that vote.
You got it, Tim. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwall?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, vocational education options. In your packet, there were two letters that we could send out, one to Old Colony, one to Bristol Plymouth, for consideration to join, or not to join, but for consideration to look at our options and see which one is best suited for the town, and what one makes financial sense. Charlie?
I'll go for it first, I guess.
Go ahead.
I'm in favor of the Old Colony letter. I have no problem with that. I think that that's, you know, I, I wish they would have come to us, but we're going to them, okay? And that's, that's the way it is. As to the Bristol Plymouth, I think that might be a little bit too premature, well, not too premature, that's a double, but a little bit premature. I, I understand that there is the ability of us pursuing that as a option. I'm just thinking that it might be better to hold off on Bristol Plymouth, because it might give Old Colony a feeling that we're, you know, putting two irons in the fire, maybe. I, I know what we, that statutorily, we can ask Bristol Plymouth also. I don't have a problem with that. Eventually, that might have to be done. But I like to see us try to pursue the Old Colony, since we have the relationship for so long.
George?
I agree with Charlie.
Okay, well, I don't. And, and David, you can expand on this too. We actually already belong to Bristol Plymouth, so there would be no cost in joining Bristol Plymouth, because we never formally succeed, seceded from Bristol Plymouth. So we're still on the books as being part of their district, so there would be no buy-in to that. And I think it would be good to just look at both community, both schools, and see who's going to offer us the best deal. You know, the last year, we've had to pay extra money to Old Colony, which we've never had to pay before, and, you know, there's going to be a buy-in to that school, and we need to look at what, what option is best suited for us. Bristol Plymouth has more shops, so they already have some of the shops and some of the educational vocational, you know, entities that Old Colony doesn't have, that they're going to build upon, right? Like, like he said a couple of weeks ago, that they have to build in addition because they want to do HVAC, where Bristol Plymouth already has HVAC. So I think there's more opportunities, and, I mean, we can compare. And if at the end of the day, we say, no, we're better suited to go to Old Colony, then that's where we can go. But what are we going to compare if we just get an offer from Old Colony? Then we're always going to wonder, was this really the right choice for us? David?
Yeah, I would agree with that from the perspective that they, they, Old Colony should know that they're not the only game in town, so to speak. And the, the, the only question I would have is, number one, would Bristol, Bristol County, Bristol Plymouth, I'll get it right yet, whether they're going to honor that. I know it goes back to the 70s where we were a member, when we never technically withdrew. The second question would be whether they have the capacity. It appears at this point that we're not going to be going back to Old Colony this year at least, based upon, you know, what I, what I've heard. So we really have a year to figure it out, but we don't want to take a year to figure it out. And it's unfortunate, because the 20, so, you know, 20 kids that didn't get in this year, they're at a real disadvantage now, because they, you don't start a vocational training and skip your first year. So how are you going to now make up that year that would have been an important part of your training as an electrician, or, you know, they're, they're going to, I, I'm not sure how that happens, but.
No, it's definitely unfortunate, and I feel bad for those kids. No, it's definitely unfortunate, and I feel bad for those kids. I mean, they've waited so long, you know, and they've done well in school because they, they wanted an opportunity to go to a vocational school because that's where their interest is, whether their parents have a job, uh, you know, a, a business in that area, and they're gonna carry out the family name, or for whatever reason, they just don't wanna go to a traditional high school and they wanna learn a trade and then open up their own business. I mean, I feel bad for those kids. They've worked really hard. They've gotten in, um, uh, out of the forty-three kids that apply, thirty-one of them made, you know, made the, uh, threshold to be able to be in Old Colony, and I, and I just, it's, you know, it's awful. Um, Charlie?
Yep.
Uh, all right.
Oh, David, go ahead and.
I think if Old Colony had come back and said, hey, you know, we understand that we're, you know, we're gonna try to make this work somehow and could place those twenty kids, that would make the decision a lot easier. But the position they put us in, you know, particularly with those kids, and not being able to get their first year of vocational training, I think you, you really do need in a way to do, have due diligence. In that you, you have to look at both and say, what's the better school for the kids? Uh, in terms of the offerings, in terms of the town, in terms of how much it's gonna cost. The only concern I would have is, is that if you did decide with Bristol Plymouth, um, you'd now have a certain number of kids at Old Colony that would be finishing out, and you'd have transportation costs associated with that. And then you'd now have an additional transportation cost to get people, the kids to Bristol Plymouth. So there could potentially be a second cost there that we haven't really accounted for.
No, I was gonna mention that, but also, uh, can we look into bringing some of these programs back to our own schools?
George, the, the thing is, is that Lakeville is in Old Colony. They voted to get into Old Colony. So now you would, you would be trying to bring programs in to only maybe, uh, thirty students, uh, well, pardon me, we'll say, uh, a hundred and twenty students. So economically, you know, that would be, that wouldn't be feasible. That's why, that's why the vocational program at a ponique uh, ended when, uh, Lakeville did join Old Colony.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying, but it might be worth at least, uh, some study, of course, some exploration to see really what, what that it would be all about. I mean, it may not be feasible. I, I think you're right.
Uh, well, okay, just to end it from my point here is, um, have we had any, uh, legal opinion as to where we stand in the statutory, um, oh, view at, uh, Bristol Plymouth?
So that letter was actually, um, given to us by, um, our superintendent of schools. Um, also, the superintendent of schools for Bristol Plymouth actually lives in the town of Free Town, and he sent me an email this morning, um, saying that he would be more than happy to help us in any way possible. He knows our students already, so, I mean, it just, no one's saying that we have to do this, but it gives us a better understanding of what it's gonna cost in the end. And for rea- for transportation, we do get an eighty percent reimbursement right now, so, um, I don't know what the cost would be, but we'd have less people going to Old Colony. Maybe one class going to Bristol Plymouth, you know, so it may be offset somehow. But those are, but those, those, right, are all the things that we would be able to find out and compare cost. Instead of somebody giving you a bill to say, here's your refrigerator, it's, it's gonna cost you two hundred dollars, but the guy next door said he could fix it for a hundred. You would never know.
All right, I, okay, the added information that you had to have, that you've had some discussion with, uh, Bristol Plymouth as a police, you know, preliminary feeling, feeler. All right, I don't have an objection to sending them that letter then.
All right, well, we'll just look at it, we'll just look at it, and we'll make a decision from, from all the information that we gather. So are you making that as a motion?
I'll make that as a motion.
Do you want that as a second, George?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
And myself. Um, all right, next. Award contract and sign agreement with vertical communications for the purchase and installation of wiring for a speaker system at the new police station.
Uh, basically, uh, sorry.
God damn it.
They wanted me to explain it, but if you don't want me to explain it, I'm okay.
No, no, I, okay, go ahead, David.
I was just gonna say, this is a, a cost that we, uh, had found out that needed to be addressed in terms of running the speaker wire, uh, to the speakers. There's some of the speakers will be just put in, but others will, the wiring will be there in the future if they decide to, uh, use those spots, so it's, uh, it's something that is being recommended by, um, um, the project manager and as well as the architect, so. And it's not a insurmountable cost, it's, I wanna say sixty-two hundred dollars, I don't have. Is sixty-two or sixty-seven hundred?
Sixty-four, sixty-four.
Motion to, uh, pay or accept.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, award. Award keep cod, um, aggregate, uh, the annual roadway supplies and materials. In the amount of, oh, sorry, in the amount of fifteen fifty per ton delivered.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. I'm assuming that this went out to bid. Yes, it did. Okay.
David, why didn't one of those companies want to bid? Do you know?
I do not know. Uh, Mike, uh, probably is, uh, person who put them out to bid.
And, or is it only three?
Do a three. You're required, uh, under a certain threshold, you're required to, you're only required to get three.
But does that really count as three then, if one says they don't want to?
Uh, yeah, it does, actually. As long as you solicit three. Even if you only got one and you, you made the attempt, you document who they were, the time you made the call, or sent the email, and, uh, that, that suffices in terms of the legal obligation, uh, notice.
Okay.
On the side, do we have any, uh, black topping to do anywhere for parking lots or streets?
Yeah, that was part of my report. Um, I've been working with Mike and all of those, uh, for all the road materials, uh, we have a bid that's going out. Um, in, I, I wanna say it's, uh, June sixth, we're having the bid opening. That includes all the asphalt, uh, coal planing, um, all of those type of things. So that just could put in the central register into the combis and, and where, at this point, actually, it went in, uh, combis today, so, uh, we'll be opening those bids in June.
Uh, the reason I ask is asphalt is at, uh, very low price right now because of oil prices. So if we have any projects, this would be the time to do that.
All right, good point.
Charlie, anything else?
Um, no, just on the asphalt, David, just so you know. Uh, we do want at some time to, uh, pave Station Two's lot, but of course, we have to get the water main, uh, situation cleared up first. And, um, right now, they're, because of the situation, the contractors hasn't done the project yet. But, uh, maybe we, maybe we can just have that in mind too, if we are gonna bid in, in amounts. I think it, it comes, the bid is actually, uh, like per ton, can you just buy it as you need it? But don't quote me on that.
We do have some internal capacity to actually lay asphalt, but I don't think it's the kinda capacity where we could do a, a parking lot. I could be wrong, but.
It's, it's more like, I, I believe it's more like a patch job if you wanna do it.
Yeah, yeah, we actually had done that in the, um, on the town hall when we had the, the septic system problems. We had to literally dig up the box and replace it, and we, we cold patched it. It wasn't, it was a hot patch, but it, it's like you can see the markings all over the, the parking lot.
Right.
All right, um, did we call that vote? No? All right, so did I have a motion and a second?
I'll, I'll make the motion if I have it already, or whatever.
Okay, and George, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, David, oh no, ambulance abatements. Um, contractual allowances in the amount of ninety thousand, one seventy-six, sixty-five, and write-offs in the amount of fourteen thousand, six twenty, ninety-seven, for a total of one oh four, seven ninety-seven, sixty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
All right. Is that a roll call, Tim? Okay.
So I got everybody.
All right, thank you. All right, David, spending plan for the public health support.
Uh, as we had discussed previously, we're gonna be using, uh, that money, uh, for number one, uh, additional hours for Laurie, uh, as our town nurse, and also for any supplies or, um, activities related to the COVID nineteen virus. That's sort of the plan at this point. I don't believe we'd actually have incurred any costs. Uh, but, uh, actually we did with the signs, those signs that we put up at the recreation areas. But that's the type of thing that we're gonna be using the money for. And those are all approved costs as part of the grant. I have talked to Derek about that.
Yeah. So you don't need anything from us tonight, right?
No, that's, that's pretty much, just to let you know what, how we're gonna spend it.
You need to actually vote the spending plan.
Okay. So do I have a motion to vote the spending plan laid out by Derek, uh, by David and, um, the Board of Health?
I'll make that motion.
I'll abstain.
Okay, um, I will second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Um, document management system.
Okay, this, uh, this, uh, is the IT grant that we got as part of, uh, the, uh, community, um, I'm drawing a blank on the, uh,
Community Compact Agreement.
Best practice. I'm, the compact. The compact. And, um, basically, it was a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to be shared by two communities, Lakeville and, uh, the town of Free Town. We are the lead community, uh, because we have the eligibility. Uh, we put the, it was a joint application between the two communities. And I, I've included in, um, the, uh, agenda packet, uh, an overview, it says, so we're gonna hire a contractor to develop a scope of services, project timeline, action plan to complete the project goals, so we, uh, create a records inventory, numbers of files, papers, cards, folders in each of the, for each of the towns, categorize the records by title, systemize by frequency of reference, determine the, how references are made, uh, determine statutory requirements, directives, uh, digitize and scan all the pertinent information, and to purge, consolidate, color code, or relocate, or upgrade others to, uh, the file locations. Basically, what we're looking to do is, we're, we're gonna get some kind of a software package that will allow us to get all of our records into a digitized file that will allow, you know, the different departments to actually go in as keyword, um, you know, public hearing nineteen sixty-six, and be able to have the software, uh, pull up those records that have been digitized. Uh, we're also going to, uh, each town is gonna get a plotter scanner, uh, to be able to digitize, uh, the larger records, for example, a map, like a, you know, a, a plot plan from the nineteen fifties or, uh, you know, any type of, uh, record, you know, letter size or legal size record, uh, that can be scanned. So that, that's basically what the grant is for, that's what we're planning on doing, and, uh, hopefully we'll get started with that in the fall.
Charlie?
I, uh, do you need a motion?
Yes, we should, you should make a.
I'll make the motion that we, uh, accept this, uh, spending plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to poll the members, please. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Um, I just wanna make sure that, um, that, Tim, you're all set with our roll calls, or would you like us to do anything over again?
Uh, yeah, if you could redo the roll call on the ambulance abatements and the last spending plan, the one for the public health, that'd be great.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna review the spending plan, and, um, Charlie, you made that motion, I seconded it. Um, all in favor? Aye. Mr. Grunwald is abstaining, you were abstaining? Okay, all right, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Abstain.
And Ms. Pacheco, yes. And, um, the ambulance abatements, um, contractual allowances and the write-offs for a total of one oh four, seven ninety-seven, sixty-two.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Where are we now, Tim? Cause I'm lost.
Uh, next, we have, uh, approval of minutes for April sixth, April eighth, April thirteenth, April fourteenth, April fifteenth, and April twenty-second.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hi, Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Um, and we finished the document management system, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just have a question for David. David, is, has Jackie been involved at, at all in this? Because I know she was leading this as the records keeper.
Uh, I have talked to her about it. I haven't, um, it actually, uh, it, it was, it actually came from Lakeville and their interest in it. Um, I have spoken to her about it. She did express interest in it. I haven't actually had an opportunity to act, you know, given, you know, what we've been going through, we haven't really had an opportunity to sit down and go through the details of it. Um, I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to do that over the next few weeks, uh, via a Zoom call. And just get, cause we really need to coordinate also with, with, uh, Lakeville in terms of, I don't, you know, there's no point in both of us bidding out, um, the project separately in terms of the, the division of funds. So it's, it's gonna be up to Maureen and I to actually, uh, have, have, uh, you know, put together some kind of a program that will do the things that we're talking about, and having their town clerk involved also.
So, so again, you, all four of you will work on it together. I know you and Maureen have taken the lead, but I just wanna make sure that we keep Jackie involved because I know that we, um, did a warrant article several years ago for some record keeping, um, program. So I just wanna make sure that she's in a loop on that.
Yeah, I actually, like I said, I have actually spoken to her a couple of different times about it. Not a full sit-down discussion of it, but I let her know what it was that we were trying to do, and she seemed to be on board with it, so.
Great, all right, thank you so much. Um, and you wanna go jump into your town administrator's report?
Okay, uh, first thing, I just wanted the board to let the board know that the town hall generator is installed up and running. Um, so that, uh, is one project that's been going, ongoing for a period of time and now off the list. Um, I have put together a, uh, well, oh, well, actually, I've been working with, uh, Andy and Dan Newhall at, uh, Compass, and the fire station doors are now out to bid, Station One. Uh, the, the brick facade repair as well as the doors, uh, it's in combis. Uh, we're gonna do it through Project Dog, which is the, uh, program that we used previously for the police station building. And, uh, the bid opening on that is, uh, May twenty-fifth, which we, after the fact, found out was Memorial Day. So we're gonna issue an addendum for the following day. Uh, but that should be opened and we'll be ready to roll on that. Same thing with the road materials. We, uh, Mike had put all the packet together, and it's now, uh, I believe it's on June sixth that we're gonna be opening that. I've been working on a contract, uh, for Arden, uh, who will conduct. Who will conduct the installation of the LED lights. I'm going to have that on the agenda, hopefully on Monday. So we can get that approved and get on the schedule. I anticipate that that'll be done within a month. They're not, they're still working. At this point, I just want to get it on the schedule. So that at least we have a timeline as to when they'll do the actual installation. I'm going to, I want to have on the agenda on Monday with the chair's permission. The prioritized budget that we had discussed previously. I'm going to discuss a little bit about the whole vacation time thing on Monday. But I think that we, we're also going to need to have that on the, the, I should say on Wednesday. On Monday, we should, we're going to have to actually take a vote on that. So we can have a little bit of a discussion about it. But on Monday, actually take a vote, have, I'm going to lay out some options. We have all the background information on the number of hours and the potential impact and costs if we decided to do the buyout. But at this point, I just wanted to let the board know where we're at and then have it on the agenda to vote on, on Monday. Yeah, that's about it.
All right. The police station, I don't know if you guys have been by it, but the cell tower is, base has been poured. Everything's still, they're still going according to schedule. The EMT goes over every morning and does a temperature check on them. You know, there have been some increased costs due to the COVID cleaning that is necessitated by the governor. So we'll be talking about that soon. We're trying to work on that, those numbers still. But I, it's coming along and work is going along. As, as the town plan, we're still looking for an end of June, on July opening. And also, it, we'll be talking about this at our next meeting. We're going to be looking at doing a time capsule to put in there. So if any of you have anything that you want to add to that time capsule, just keep that in mind. I'm thinking everything COVID, my hand sanitizer. My mask. When people open it up in twenty years, they're going to be like, what is this? But anyway, that's where we are on that and I will turn it over to the personnel board.
All right, Tim, I know there's two items, correct?
Yep, you are correct.
I failed to do my duty here and I do not have the actual item. I know that the, it's basically a library trustees asking appointment at the committee. Would you name the names? I don't have them. I don't want to miss any.
Yep, absolutely. We have Dorothy Stanley Ballard, Beverly Sadik, Linda Fornier, Ally Galt, and Paul Sadik. They would be part of the preliminary screening committee for the purpose of filling the upcoming library director vacancy effective April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Okay, is there any discussion?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Go ahead, George.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Grunwald?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. And the second item is for a.
Is.
Alternate.
It's, yep, it's exactly right. It's Irene Ashley, which is an alternate member to the same committee that we just mentioned.
Okay, is there any discussion on the item?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Grunwald?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. That's it, right, Tim?
Yep, that is it.
Okay.
George, do you have anything from the Board of Health that you'd like to say?
As a matter of fact, yes. I would like to have on the agenda in the next two, three weeks. A meeting of the Board of Health to discuss the transfer station.
Okay, we can put that on the agenda under person, under Board of Health. All right, anybody have anything else? Charlie?
I'm good, I'm good.
David?
The only thing, under the old business, we did find out from the finance committee that they're holding off on the legal paying. Transfer on the legal expenses. On the budget on Monday and the discussion on the vacation time. I, my thought was maybe we should have a joint meeting and that might be an opportunity to talk to them about that also.
Okay.
On the old, on the old business, we have council on aging building addition.
Yeah, so I can just bring you up to speed. There's really nothing other to say that. Andy did send the architect or one of his draft spin over to measure out the building, check out all the guts of the building. Measurement and so on and so forth. So we should be getting some more detailed information from them soon.
So there's nothing new?
Nope, nothing new.
Oh, so why was it on the agenda?
No, it's just under old business to keep, it, old business is for us, it's like Tim's Corner, actually. It's for us to just keep track of everything. So we don't lose anything, you know, from week to week. That's all.
All right.
All right, anybody else? Guys, we have a pretty busy agenda on Wednesday, so sleep well Tuesday night.
What time is the ME on Wednesday?
One o'clock.
Okay.
And is that just the personnel issue we have?
No, we have a COVID update also. We're just going to have Derek give an overview of what's been happening in the community in terms of the numbers. You know, unfortunately.
I'll be sending out the meeting information shortly.
Unfortunately, we've had two individuals in town pass away, which is really, you know, a shame. You know, I'm hoping that at some point soon, we're going to be seeing those numbers churn down. But. Yeah, I know.
I know.
Other than that.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. I'd just like to ask Tim a question.
Go ahead.
Tim, could you give me a call after the meeting?
Yep.
Thank you.
I can do that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, make sure I poll everybody to make sure that they want to adjourn. Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Grunwald?
I'm not sure. Let me think about this. Aye.
And myself, aye. Have a good night, everybody. Stay safe.
Take, take care.
Bye.
Hey, everybody.